I'd call the meeting to order. You all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Okay, is, I guess, I guess former trustee Watecki could not make it. We are, we have a momentum, memento for him that we'd, we were gonna present to him this evening, but what we'll do is we'll, we'll ask him to come in and we'll give it to him at that time. Um, you all signed the, the memento? Okay, that's great. So I, um, you know, I, I would, I would like to thank Greg for his service. He was on the board for two years. Um, I think his focus and his commitment to serving the community was, was exemplary. Um, and it's, uh, it's a shame that personal issues have led to his need to resign. And I, um, and I think that we all, if you get a chance, can, if you can thank him at some point or other for the time he spent with us. And like I said, we'll call in, Paul will call in, see if he can come in and pick up the, what we did is the, I think you all saw it, it's a, it's a framed with his name, name tag, and we all signed around it, so, um, that will be, that, that will be presented to him. Okay, um, let's see here, is there, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, I would like to go to the appointment of a, a new trustee to fill the vacancy. I have chosen to appoint Brian May of Mount Prospect. Uh, just read a little bit in his background. He's a partner with the law firm of Adler, Murphy, and McQuillan. He represents aviation and aerospace manufacturers in product liability actions arising out of accidents involving commercial and general aviation aircraft. He represents airlines in their litigation involving wrongful death, personal injury, contractual claims, and environmental claims. Additionally, he defends pilots, airlines, and air transport companies in the FAA enforcement actions. He also defends corporations with respect to discrimination lawsuits. Prior to his practice, he served as a criminal trial lawyer for the United States Navy. He was a JAG. As a prosecutor, he successfully prosecuted over 300 cases, including dozens of jury trials to verdict as the lead counsel. He also acted as general counsel to 50 millinery commands in 10 states advising unethical, criminal, regulatory, contractual, and labor issues. During his tenure with the Navy, he was assigned to special prosecutor, as a special prosecutor to the U.S. Central Command in Baghdad, Baghdad, Iraq, successfully prosecuting over 100 insurgents for attacks against coalition forces. He also collaborated with the U.S. Department of Justice and Iraqi judges in developing an Iraqi federal court with national jurisdiction over government corruption, terrorism, white-collar crime, and crimes against the Iraqi government. From 1997 to 99, he served as a, earlier in his, when he was a younger guy, as a Peace Corps volunteer in Ukraine. He has served as a board member of the Mount Prospect School District 57 from 17 to 21, and he also served on the Board of Governors for the Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization from 18 to, 2018 to 21. So, um, I know Brian reasonably well, and I felt his qualifications were, I think, were very appropriate and would be beneficial to our board, and so I chose to appoint him to the position, and he so kindly accepted. So if we can have the clerks wherein Brian, who is here?
Here's the microphone.
Raise your right hand, please.
I, Brian May, do solemnly swear.
I, Brian May, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Elk Grove Township trustee to the best of my ability. Yeah.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Elk Grove Township trustee to my, to the best of my abilities.
Awesome.
Very good, welcome.
All right, Brian, you take a seat up here. So the, uh, the junior trustee gets a sit by me.
Boy, now it's your turn.
Okay, um, congratulations, Brian, glad to have you on board, and I'm sure you can touch base with each of the guys afterwards. I think you know a number of them already. Okay, um, we've got a, the consent agenda now, that's the authorization of payroll bills, uh, that's for the town fund, general assistance, road department, and sewer, and then my reports and social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and financial. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No, sir.
If not, uh, um, go ahead, and we'll do, we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Abstain.
Supervisor Bussie.
Approve, uh, I approve. Um, okay, we'll go to the discussion and potential action on approval minutes. This is November 28th, 2022, regular board meeting.
Sorry, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second?
My second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the minutes?
No.
If not, uh, roll call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Abstain.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, discussion and potential action, that's done, so presentation for the administrative and operations department. If you remember, what I, we do is every, every year we'll have the, um, the department heads do a present, one, uh, one, uh, one, uh, meeting for the beginning of the year just to give you an update on their departments and any new developments and anything they want you to be aware of, and also to answer any questions. So our administrator will be doing, will be talking about operations and administration today.
Okay, so you'll have, you have, it's three pages attached in front of you, color copies. A couple of them I was able to put in the, um, the board packet, uh, if I didn't have your board packet or whatever, I just put it at your place, so everybody should have one of these. So basically, the three things that I pulled out from the administration area is, um, are listed here. First is a taxi program, uh, and this shows rides by the year. Now, the taxi program has gone downhill tremendously since 2017. It started out where people couldn't get rides, um, they would call the cab companies wouldn't get any service, uh, there's one cab company that we use, but we understand from other townships that the, the second one is the major player in the area is not responding either to, to additional assistance from the town, or request for additional assistance from the township. And so you can see that things dropped in 2018 and 19, and then it went off the, the road in 2020 and 2021, and this year we've done only 51 rides, whereas, you know, if you look back what we did in 2017, it was over 3,400. So with that program, the township supplements a ride, a one-way ride, uh, for $5. The, uh, ride has to either begin or terminate within the township, and, um, we got into a program recently with an outside company where they, the people get a card, and then at the beginning of every month, if they've, they've ridden one time or 10 times during the month, it goes back to reset it at full on the first of every month. So we used to have to send them paper copies and all those things, and it was a big pain. So this was a great program to have, and it was going really well, like I said, until it went off the rails. So that's the first item there, so we'll start off with the bad news. Passports processed per year is the second page there. In 2018 and 2019, um, from that year to the next was about a 17% increase in the number of passports that we processed. And of course, 19, it was, you know, uh, the beginning before everything hit in 2020, and that went down to 98, uh, passports that we did, and that was toward the end of the year when people felt like they could start traveling again. So that was just a very blip at the end of the year. In 2021, it picked up, uh, from 21 to 22, we had another 33% increase in, in passports that were processed. And the ladies in the front office do an excellent job with this, as they do with all of these things that I'm gonna talk about. But, um, they, they can go through passports like, you know, Lickety Split, they're very good at it, um, they, they can, they've seen all the different issues and problems and know how to handle those things, uh, with the people that come in. So, um, people are very happy with that, uh, that the, I don't know if you know, but the post office across the street is, uh, one that doesn't do passports, where a lot of passport facilities are located within the postal, uh, postal offices, there is not one there. So we have the benefit of when people come in and ask anything about passports, they point their finger and say, go across the street, they'll take care of you. So people are very, uh, happy when they walk in and say, we were told that, you know, you guys could help us with our passport questions or to process it. And, um, and, and there's, they have bookings every, almost every day with people coming in. And you can see the difference, um, you can see the numbers on the chart on the right-hand side, there was an increase, I did the math for you, from 20 to 21 is about a 16% increase in the number from 3,900 to 4,522. And then, um, this year so far, without even including December, uh, these numbers show about a 25% increase in passports. So, um, we're, there's a lot of people that are coming in that are getting service from the front office and the administration area in that respect. The other item, oh, I'm sorry, I must have not put that in there. We talk about the food pantry all the time. The food pantry now, at this point in time, uh, in November hit a new high of over 600 families that they served for the month. So that was a, we were in the 540s, 550s, and then it jumped to 600, so don't know what December's gonna come in at, or now, uh, at the beginning of the year and the inflationary pressures that everybody's going through, but, um, they're cranking out stuff there. We have a lot of people that support that program. I've gotten in multiple checks in the last week, $500, $1,000, $250. I mean, probably in the last week, we've probably gotten $5,000 in donations just for, just for the food pantry. So the community is behind it, they know what we do, and, um, then we have a good reputation in the community with that. So, um, if there's any questions on any of these programs, I'd be glad to answer them for you now or later, whichever you'd like, or if there's something that you wanna ask that I didn't cover, I'd be glad to do that.
I know you, you addressed, um, a couple of the three issues where we've seen some, some changes, but could you give context to the transportation, the other two transportation services that we have?
Oh, sure. So we have the, um, the bus program that is, uh, we have three buses, we have three bus drivers, and we travel within the township boundaries. We will go a little bit outside the boundaries if it's for a doctor's appointment, something like that. But those buses run, uh, five days a week, uh, they're out the door at nine o'clock, and I think the last appointment we take for pickup is like three something or other to get all the people picked up from the doctors and get them home, and the, uh, drivers back here by four o'clock is when the day closes for the, for the building. So that's that. The, um, other program is a program that we have in partnership with other, four other townships in the area and Pace, uh, where they have buses that will go for medical appointments outside the township, and that's based upon, um, how many township borders they cross, with a maximum of two borders that we will charge them for. A ride where it goes over just one township border, I believe, is, uh, it's $5, $5 a township. So if this is say somebody was going to Glenview or whatever, I mean, that's multiple townships they're gonna cross through, but they would only pay $10 each way. So in order to get to Glenview for a military or, you know, a doctor or whatever, um, they can do that, but it's a lot less expensive than taking a cab or Uber or something like that. So, uh, that's called the trip program, and the buses and the, uh, employees that drive those buses are provided by Pace, and they actually provide, um, stipend for our program to be spread among the townships, uh, in the amount of, I think they just raised it to $300,000 this coming year. So among the five townships, we split that, and it usually comes out where we don't spend all of it, but, um, the townships take advantage of that for the people that need to go to doctors outside of our area where we cannot take them.
All right, then on the, um, on the special services that we provide, passports, and then the office also coordinates the, um, calls on the buses and trip and things like that, taxis, um, what are the other, if you mentioned the other services that the, that the front office provides?
Um, the, the office provides, um, handicap placards that we provide with the completed document from the person's doctor that says whether it's a 30 or 60 or 90 day, or if it's a six-month, um, disability card that they, a handicap parking card that they need, and then we take care of that, we, the ladies up front, not me. Uh, I, I'm not qualified to do that stuff. But, um, yeah, they take care of those people that come in, uh, we register people for, uh, to vote, and, um, like I said, the passports is a big program, and, um...
Hunting and fishing?
Yes.
What's that?
Hunting and fishing?
Oh, yeah, hunting and fishing, that goes, that's cyclic, so, or cyclical, so we don't see that except a couple times a year. Um, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, uh, as far as what we have.
Could you just, uh, mention who your, what your staff is and what their positions are?
Okay, the, um, there are three ladies in the front office, and what they do is they take care of scheduling the people that need to ride on our township bus, as well as the program, the trip program that we have, uh, with Pace. They take care of all that scheduling. People call in, uh, get their appointments, they get, get the time that when they're gonna be picked up, when they're out within the community, they'll call and they'll say, I'm at the doctor's office, but I'm done, I got it done early today, can you have somebody come pick me up? The ladies coordinate with the drivers to get that done, uh, and get the people home safely. So those three buses are going usually five days a week, um, all over the, all over the township, and I just found out from Ellen today is that the buses have 30,000 miles on them already, and we just bought those two years ago. So they put a lot of miles on them. The, um, other thing that, uh, we do is just provide administrative assistance to all the departments, anybody that needs assistance with, um, creating flyers for promotional activities to help with their budgets, uh, all the personnel issues, uh, heating and cooling, uh, anything, anything operational we take care of upfront. And, um, there's, um, two ladies that do that, and the assistant administrator, um, works with me closely, uh, now more and more with the, the bigger programs that we're doing, um, on a long-term basis. So, um, she's been a big help, and, uh, I appreciate that, so...
So in the front office, he has Mandy and Debbie. Uh, Mandy is, um, is our most recent hire, and then, um, he has, and then Izzy is now the, uh, the deputy or assistant administrator, and I had to give up my office for her, so...
She's happy for that, too, thank you.
I lost my, I lost my room with the window. Now I'm just enclosed in this little cell.
You can look out my windows.
Right, exactly, I come and see your room. And then we, we do have, um, our, our financial, finance director.
Oh, yeah, right, I'm sorry, I was just talking about the ladies in the front, but yeah, um, Erica Renz is the, uh, uh, finance director, and she takes care of all of the, um, the receipting of all the money that we get in, whether it be from the county, the state, uh, people making donations, et cetera. She's the one that does all the, the transactions in the software, uh, is responsible for the audit, uh, she takes care of the insurance with the health and the, the liability insurance programs, uh, or policies that we have with our, um, outside contractors for that. And, um, she's a big help on a lot of things. She's been around probably 15-plus years and really knows everything that goes on in the township, as, as many of the people here are. They know a lot more than just their one department. So there's a lot of people that are cross-trained, so, uh, if, we've had some people that were off on some medical issues and we were down to maybe one person, we could grab them out of another, somebody out of another department to come and help, uh, in the busy times. So that, that's a good thing that we have.
I would say that we have a very good administrative department, um, that the front office does a great job in terms of the coordinating of transportation and the special services they provide, um, and that the customer service there is outstanding, and I've listened numerous times. And Erica is, it does extraordinarily good job for us on the financial side, and like I said last time, she's the one that keeps us from getting in any sort of trouble. And, um, as you know, you go through the bills and sign off on all the, all the bills and everything that she prepares for you guys, um, works with the banks, works with, uh, works with the auditors, does all that, all that work. And then I, I find Paul and Izzy are, are fantastic, and I, Izzy was moved forward from the front office to be a deputy administrator because I wanted Paul to have a little more time to look at the bigger issues as we grow and our programs expand and our services expand. I, I want him to have a little more time to, to think, um, rather than always just being on the computer at his desk working. So Izzy gives him a little more time, uh, to take all my calls and all my questions now, so, um, but Paul has done a fantastic job, and I think we, we really, from a day-to-day basis, Paul's the one that runs the, the township, I just get in his way, so. But anyway, uh, thank you, Paul. Any questions? Are there any questions for the, about the administrative department?
Uh, Paul, the, um, the taxi program is just a partnership, correct? There's, that's not a financial, um, contractual agreement with the taxi company?
Um, well, in, only in the fact that the riders, when they give them the card to swipe for the $5 credit, that goes to them. I mean, that goes to their company. So, I mean, but we don't have an agreement with eight, whatever the one, two, three company is that we pay them $10,000 a year or what, nothing like that, no.
Yeah, I'm just looking...
It's just on a per-ride basis.
Looking at, you know, obviously the decline and, you know, with Uber and Lyft and all these other...
Yeah.
...abilities for people to get rides other than our township bus or the, the Pace, as George, you know, as you just talked about, um, if this was something that we were gonna continue to keep doing or offering.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I think we gotta give it a little bit more time. I think people are just afraid to ride in taxis. Uh, and we had apprehension from people riding even before COVID happened, because they, they just don't feel comfortable, and a lot of people that need assistance, um, because they have a walker or wheelchair, they don't feel comfortable riding in a taxi, so, and they don't maybe fit the time schedule, or they wanna go on a different time schedule than our buses, so they're kinda out there in limbo. I don't know, I mean, I think we look at it and see what happens next year, at what goes on in the world, and see if, if that picks up a little bit, but if not, I, you know, I don't think that would be that big of a loss if we had to do that. I mean, there are some people that do, do use it, obviously, but, I mean, we do have other forms that they could use, yeah.
It's not, it's not a big investment in funds on our part either, and it just provides a third alternative for individuals that, um, that haven't, have a special need for transportation, and not only people have been a little uncomfortable, but also during COVID, they couldn't get taxi cab drivers, so they'd call in the taxi, they couldn't get a taxi, or the taxi wouldn't show up.
They, yeah, they'll, they would, the people call in for a ride, and they say, okay, we'll be there in such and such time, and they just don't show up, and that, we've heard from other townships that use taxis, that that's been a big issue, too, it just, they say they're coming in, they don't show up.
So as long as it's being used by, uh, some, a reasonable amount of people will probably continue it because it's, doesn't, doesn't require a lot of effort and does provide a third alternative.
I mean, and that's perfect, my, my only question, from a financial perspective.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I understand. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Can this program be applied to, um, Uber and Lyft and...
Um, what I was gonna say, I answered part of Vince's question, we say, is there any other financial thing, and there is not with the cab company, but the company that put the software program together, uh, we pay them an annual fee, I think, plus a per-ride fee or something of that, but you, you've seen the bills, I mean, they're just peanuts, so, um, that's the only other, uh, financial thing we have. As far as could it be done with something else? I don't know, I know that I've read about different entities partnering with Uber, um, we haven't looked into that.
You want, you wonder if the, the decline could be, um, related to people using Lyft and Uber more than taxis?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, and I think it's, sometimes it's just that they don't wanna ride with somebody they don't know whether, what it is, but I mean, it's a good thought, and I've, I've read some articles about it recently that said that there were entities that were going to that, but I think that there's, uh, I think that rate may be higher than what cab companies would charge. I mean, so if we were getting 3,400 people riding, it may be something that we would have to look at as far as cost goes, huh?
Definitely gonna be higher than...
Than a cab, right.
No, than the amount that the, that the township is giving them on their card.
Well, they only get $5 off the ride, no matter how much it is. I mean, it could be a hundred-dollar ride, but then only $5 of it is gonna come off when they swipe it. So a lot of times people just go to a short thing, beauty parlor or whatever, and it's, you know, they can get there for $5 and get home for $5, so...
That was, that was the intent of this program, is it's viewed as a short-distance taxi ride, and they don't, when it, the bus doesn't fit their schedule, and it doesn't, they don't qualify for trip because that's medical and really set for going across township lines. So this was viewed as a, as a short-distance taxi ride, and the five bucks then makes a difference. If you're driving a lot longer than that, at some point, five bucks doesn't mean anything. But I think we, I think we will look into the, that was a good, good, good question about Uber and Lyft, and see if that's something that would be more productive or better for us to use than maybe even the taxis, so...
We also support, um, an agency called Connections to Care, and they have volunteers who sign up to give people rides to medical appointments, and they gave 141 rides to 19 of our residents last year, and we give them grant money, and the rides are $15.
That's an agency that we, we, that we work with, yeah. It's not us doing it, but it's an agency that they...
And that's hard for you to track, Paul, right? So I mean, you just know about the taxi cab rides that were given, you know, for, for this year, but if, if in fact they were using Uber or some other form, you'd have no way of knowing that, so you can't provide data on...
Well, other than the billing process, because that's how we know how many people ride the taxis, because they, um, oh, no, they wouldn't, that's, it's just by this, it's a report that comes out of the system that shows how many rides that they swipe, right, right. So Uber would have to have that same software. Yeah, and I think that's the reason why we only have one taxi company that we're using in that respect, because I think the other company didn't have the software at the time that we signed up for this program, with the, with the, um, creators of the software.
But I think, like, like you said, I think that's something we should look into a little more closely, because as the community ages and we have a little more issues in that regard, transportation has become a more and more significant need that's not provided really by any, anyone except the townships and then Pace. So I think that's a good, a, good, good idea.
Okay, anything else?
Any other questions for Paul?
No, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, what do we got here? All the reports, we need the elected official reports, the assessor.
You have a written report. Uh, I want to point out that, um, obviously tax bills will be due December 30th. After that, penalties will, uh, accrue. In my report, it stated that the legislature did in fact pass the extension for the first installment. Generally, your first installment tax bill, which is 55% of the previous total tax bill the previous year, is, uh, your bill usually arrives around the first of February, due and payable on March 1st. The legislature overwhelmingly, uh, voted to extend that to April 1st, simply because of the hardship of having two bills, uh, so very close together with significant amounts, so, um, that's a plus. Uh, I'm working with, um, Ken Jokum, uh, the Wheeling Township Assessor. We're trying to set up a meeting with the two new Board of Review Commissioners. We'd like them to tour either my office or Ken's office and familiarize them with what we do and how we service, uh, the taxpayers in regard to the Board of Review. Couple things come to mind here. First of all, we noticed during the triennial reassessment that many properties in various neighborhoods, the buildings did not increase in value. However, significant increases were put on land value. And I found that incredibly curious from the standpoint that when I tracked through the MLS and looked at, uh, sales that we had gotten from the state, there was no data for that. for that. It is a question that I want to bring up to the Board of Review because when we do an appeal for a taxpayer for Board of Review, we generally focus on the building, cost per square foot. Now, if you leave that building alone and now you've got continuity in neighborhoods, but now you look at that land value that has soared, we've got no data that we can justify an appeal, which I'm sure that's why it was done. My own personal feelings here, but I think the Board of Review has got to be aware of this. I pulled MLS and I'm sure Vince could do this too. Uh, in the last two years, only two residential parcels have been sold in the entire township of Elk Grove. Now, you can't take two data points and use it to cover an entire township. I mean, that, that relies all the professional ethics that we would have. So I want to bring that up to the Board of Review because if we're looking at price per square foot, we've got no case for our taxpayer. But if we can convince them that these increases in land value have no basis in fact or in, um, professional assessment procedures, then perhaps, you know, our appeals will see more success. So that's, um, that's an issue I'm working on right now. Also, finally, uh, as you know, tax bills are inordinately late. With the way things are going, it bodes that next year's second installment will also be inordinately late. Now, the Board of Review is aware of this and after we receive our, uh, result letters from the county on appeals to the assessor, generally there's a wait period, can be six weeks, eight weeks, you know, three months. Um, what we're finding now with the Board of Review is they're trying to ameliorate this, obviously, uh, it, you know, the lateness of next year's second installment. So what I've been informed so far is as soon as they drop those result letters, they're going to open for the Board of Review appeals immediately, township by township. Now, that's, you know, way above what has ever happened before, but I can understand why they're doing it. They're trying to do a catch-up so that we don't end up with second installment tax bills at Christmas time. So that's, um, what I can tell you is we already have in place our verbiage for our robo-calls, uh, and our emails. So as soon as those result letters from Kegy's office hit and we're notified, we're going to be able to send that notification out to our taxpayers. The only problem that we're going to have is whether or not we get the data file. And we've got to have that data file from the county before we can actually process an appeal. And, say a prayer. That's all I've got.
Any questions?
It's a good thing you've got the agreements in place now for help, too.
Absolutely. You know, and the thing, um, I don't think we're going to need outside help with Board of Review from the standpoint that what truly exacerbated the horrendous situation that occurred during our triennial was the 23,000 errors on exemptions. I mean, that just was a tsunami. We have found that by communicating with our, our taxpayers through the email and through the robo-call that we can do appointments. It keeps things steady. You don't have 30, 40 people sitting, you know, in the waiting area getting really aggravated because they're not getting the service that they deserve to get. So the appointment situation has worked out extremely well. Also, because we start early and stay late, that allows us to clear voicemails and emails and work on those. The agreement is still in place with my staff that we will pay to 40 hours and anything over 40 hours will go on comp time, which saves the township money.
When do you think you'll need to take, to utilize the IGAs in what situations?
In three years, I have never seen so many errors come out of the county. So I can't even begin to tell you what the next shoe will be that falls. Certainly during this time, up until the time the bills are due and payable, we're seeing nothing but dropped exemptions. Senior freezes that should have automatically rolled over, didn't. Senior freezes dropped, wrong base years. Senior exemptions dropped, disabled dropped. Uh, it's, we spend a majority of our time correcting errors. Something happened today, the, a little vignette, as it were. We had a taxpayer who got a zero tax bill. Shouldn't have gotten a zero tax bill, but was good enough to come in and say, I got a zero tax bill and I know it's wrong. The previous owner had the freeze, uh, which would have resulted, you know. So we, as we have always done for years and years and years, sent this person over to the Skokie Satellite Office where she was rudely treated, told that there was nothing they could do about it. And, you know, why did they go to the township? Because when they do things, they just leave them in a stack and don't file them on time. It was at that point my head exploded and I contacted the county, got an apology, was told that the two people at the Skokie office would be, um, what's the term? Reeducated as to what we do. This is, this is nonsense. These people, you know. And part of this, I understand, we've had, there's been attrition. A lot of people have lost, uh, left the assessor's office for any number of reasons and a lot of them, some of our trusted people have said, I've had enough, I'm retiring. And we've lost those conduits. But this particular taxpayer came back to us and said, I have to tell you. And this was, she was, she has dealt three times with our office in the past, twice with Lori, once with Annette today. She said, you listen to us, you try to help us, and I couldn't believe that you would send me to Skokie for no reason. And, and that said, you're absolutely right. And that's when we got on the phone to the county and let them know our displeasure with their people who have no intention of servicing the taxpayer of Cook County.
Okay. Is there any other questions? All right, I, I think the services that our assessor's office provides in terms of taxpayer advocacy are not only unique and they're probably the, well, they are the only service, full-service customer, um, service available out there, but also I think it's becoming more and more important to the residents of our community in that, in that with the, the smothering tax bills that we're getting and the constant increases, uh, more and more, uh, residents feel the need to appeal and try to manage their taxes. And, and the only one, the only body or organization or, that, that can provide that type of service on an ongoing basis and a full-service type basis is, is the township assessor's offices. So, um, I only hear good things about their office. Feedback I get is, is, is not exclusively, but heavily geared towards the, the assessor's office. So, thank you, Connie. Okay, clerk.
Uh, we had no filings this month. We had one FOIA request for building and zoning information and fire department information. The property was, um, in unincorporated township, so Administrator Piak sent them to the Cook County Building and Zoning Department and the Elk Grove Township Rural Fire Department. The Agency Grant Committee has gone through all the grant applications. We've met with 10, uh, five of the agencies. We're going to meet with five more in January and we're hoping, we usually have about 30 agencies, so we're hoping to have a three-year rotation where we see them every three years, if not more. And that's it. Any questions?
I hope Trustee May realizes that, that's his committee assignment now.
His packet is right here.
His packet is right here.
Get me right into it.
All right, um, the supervisor's report. Uh, as you know, we, um, we signed off on our, uh, IGA with Mount Prospect regarding snow removal. That is for a small, a little industrial area of Mount Prospect on the south side. We have just recently signed off on the, uh, IGA with Elk Grove Township, Elk Grove Village. Um, Elk Grove Village will be doing largely residential areas for us. Um, and, um, and, um, I think that's, I'm very pleased that we were able to get this signed a couple of weeks ago, given what we've got coming up in a couple of days here. Uh, our lot, our parking lot will still be plowed by our field rep, our Roden Bridge Field Rep Art. He will be plowing the, the parking lot here and, um, we are retaining that pickup truck with the plow just for those purposes and for general purposes and a backup in case there's a problem with Elk Grove or Mount Prospect that we have a backup or Art could go out if we absolutely need to. The, um, the IGAs are very, very economically advantageous for us, let's put it that way. The costs are significantly lower than what it would have cost for us to do it ourselves. So I was very pleased with that. Um, and I think there was a request by two of the residents. I got two different calls on residents saying they heard that Elk Grove Township, Elk Grove Village was going to do the plowing and they asked that, could we send out letters notifying people or emails or whatever it is to notify people that Elk Grove Village will be doing their plowing now and not us? And I think that's not a bad idea because that way, um, they will call Elk Grove Village when there's a problem, um, which we, would be a, a direct complaint rather than having to go through us. But Art will be, Art will be available to, as a backup at any issues and will do our lots. Okay, um, you saw the fence is up. I'm sure our neighbors are very pleased with that. Took us a long time for a, for a fence, but we finally got it up. Um, over the winter here, uh, the work will be done on the bathroom and on the bike safety challenge course rooms. They can do that during the winter and then when spring hits, we'll proceed with the rest of the construction program, which has been delayed for some time because of the remediation issues. Uh, and hopefully now we'll be able to get this done, uh, by next spring and have most of our, virtually all our construction issues behind us then at that point. On the, um, on the, um, on a bus, we are, Ellen has identified the specs that we need to replace the fourth bus we have, which is old and rusty and no longer we consider safe. We'll be replacing that bus, the specs will go out with bids and, well, we'll go out with the bids and we hopefully will be getting, um, bids, bids coming in. I know there's a, uh, there's a company that we were, work with relatively regularly and they tend to be sometimes the only one that bids. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly what'll happen, but the bids will go out, they'll be open to everyone. Uh, finally, or not finally, one other thing is, um, in our surplus, we voted to make the highway commission, highway department's equipment, um, surplus, uh, with the exception of the, the pickup, the pickup truck there, the pickup truck's plow. We have found a buyer for the Mack truck. That's Northfield Township. Um, and we're, we'll be selling it for them for a hundred thousand, which is at the higher end of the different appraisals and, uh, recommendation, I mean, appraisals and, and, suggested prices by other, other townships and stuff we touch base with. They went all the way from 45,000 to 110,000. So either some people didn't know what they're talking about or trying to get us to sell it to them for real cheap. I don't, I don't know. But we, we were able to come to an agreement with Northfield for a hundred thousand, which I think is very fair. We will also be selling the chipper and the, um, and the, um, the trailer and the lawn, the rider mower that's there. That's, those are small change items and we'll, we'll work them through townships or we'll go to an auction company just to get rid of them. We will be keeping for now the front-end loader to help with the food pantry. Um, we're finding that as we grow and as we're getting more donations, that we need, um, the capability to do some heavy lifting at times. And so we'll keep the front-end loader at this particular stage. And then finally, uh, you saw that the party, the, the holiday party for the township is, what date is that?
The 13th.
13th, yeah.
Friday the 13th.
13th at Cooper's Hawk.
Friday the 13th.
Uh, you and your, you and your, your, your significant other invited to attend. I think Izzy's put a little spin on there this time. She's got a, I don't know what they call it, Dirty Santa?
Yep.
Program, whatever it is.
Is it the game where you take a number and you steal?
I guess so, yeah.
It's fun.
You, you have to come in with a gift of under 20 bucks or 20 bucks or under and then you steal or whatever it is. So I'm sure Vince will come in with some really good stuff, right Vince?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, so I, I think that's about it for right now. I think we're feeling pretty good, we're on top of things pretty well. We're waiting for, um, the decision by the, we're, we're waiting for feedback from the IEP A regarding the, the SRP, uh, request for the remediation, uh, for the, get the new, no further remediation. That package had been submitted by our consultants, the Pioneer, and now we're just waiting for a response. They may require more testing, they may, who knows what they'll require. You never know what they'll do, but I feel very good that we're going to get this NFR in the not-too-distant future. And if you remember, the reason we're going for the NFR is because even though the village went out and got the old NFR approved, um, if you remember they, when, when we, when we took over, they had to take the tanks out and when they do that, they have to test. And they found that it was above the, uh, the, the, the maximum levels that's allowed for benzene, which is not the worst. Benzene is one of the, the, the easiest to remediate and, and the least dangerous of them. That said, it was above that. Well, it appears that back in 2000 or 2002, whenever they, the village did a remediation, um, they gave them a little leeway above the standard level. So when we, the village went back in, uh, they said, oh, okay, well, we'll just, we'll just go ahead and, and approve your old NFR. So that was okay. We got that, but then the problem we had is when we looked at that NFR a little more closely, we saw that it required us to have everything blacktopped, the whole property blacktopped, front, backside, everything, which is not, which is, I mean, first of all, it's cost, it would cost us a ton to, to fix that. And second of all, it's just not, it's not what we need. So we, we've talked to the village, um, we've gone ahead and done it on our own, uh, but we, we expect the village to be partners in covering the cost of this. And, um, we are, we put in for a new NFR and our consultant felt that it was very reasonable that it not, he said it's, it's, he says, there's no reason why it has to be asphalted the whole property. And he says, if we go back in, you'll get the approval. He said, they just were, the reason why we just couldn't get them to change it now is because it was done and they don't want to have to change something old, so you got to go in something new. So we, we should be fine on that. And they told us to go ahead with the work, even though we have, don't have that NFR right now.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah. They, they, our consultant said, go ahead and do the work, get, do your construction, don't wait. This is, this is not a problem. And they're the largest remediation consultant in the, in the state. They've done more work than anyone else and they're very confident that this is, will not be an issue. So, and we didn't want to wait another, who knows how long it would take for them to come back with that and we don't want to wait another year or so. So we'll be moving ahead. Hopefully we'll have the bike safety, the challenge course, the, um, the parking along both sides in the back, the new fences up, uh, and with the bathroom and the bike safety up, up, up the snuff. And we'll be able to move ahead with those programs again, which I think is very important for the youth services who uses the challenge course in a lot of their programs. And then the bike safeties are something we've always done, it's been, did you go through bike safety here?
No.
Did you go? Did anybody go through bike safety in Mount
My kids did.
You did? Okay, I did too. Did you?
No, my kids did.
Kids did, okay.
My kids did too.
I don't know, people ride bikes anymore? I don't know. The kids ride, but I don't know. But anyway, it's, uh, we're, we're, we're
They Uber.
Looking forward to, yeah. Looking forward to have that going again. And the schools do really use it, so. Um, okay, that's mine. Any questions for me? Anybody have anything else? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, just a second.
We'll do a roll call on this.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Super, uh, sorry, Trustee May?
Trustee.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
All right. Let's see, go here. Supervisor, no correspondence, no old business, new business. We have Resolution 2022-12. As I discussed, we are selling the Mack truck. We have a offer, which we have accepted, that authorizes the sale of the 2018 Mack CXU plow truck and bill of sale. So is there, has everyone looked at that, at the resolution? Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second?
A second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Does everyone understand it? Because Paul, Paul can go into any more details if you want to on that. It's, Northfield, as you know, does, they do wheelings as well as their own. So they will do other townships. We're starting to see that Palatine does other townships. Northfield does other townships. So some townships are outsourcing. Some townships are outsourcing to other townships. And, and, and while other, well, like us, we're outsourcing to the villages.
So, so Northfield comes back west?
Yeah, they come back and do wheeling.
Wow.
They do wheeling. For us, it made more sense to go to the villages.
It does, because it's close.
Because all our unincorporated are in Mount Prospect or in Elk Grove. They, they, Wheeling had unincorporated in multiple municipalities, and it made more sense for Northfield to do it for them. And I think Palatine does it for, helps with Barrington, Barrington Hills and...
Those are village towns.
Yeah, so they have multiple too. So for them, it made sense to have in other townships. So certain townships are developing a core competency in Roden Bridge. Others of us, like us, are, are outsourcing it. Okay, let's see here. So, and if there's no, if there's no questions? Okay, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Stain.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Okay, policy number two, the Agency Grant Committee. All that we're doing here is we're adding the ability, or giving the supervisor the, the authority to appoint up to four civilians, two, four residents, I shouldn't say. I'm talking like I'm in the military still. Four residents to the board. That would mean there's five, there's five Elk Grove Township officials or staff at this point. The clerk and two trustees and...
The head of social services and the head of counseling.
Okay, they're the five. And now what we're doing is we're, I have up to four that I can appoint as residents to participate in, on that board. I'm appointing Dr. David Perns, who we've been in touch with. He indicated an interest in serving. And I'd, I'd be looking for at least one more, at least two residents at this point. So I'm, I'm open to any suggestions for a second resident to serve on, serve on that board. And as you know, that's just a seasonal one. That's just for certain, certain periods of time. So this is, this is, this is, that's basically, that's all this policy revision is. If, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any questions? Any, everybody understands it's just a basic change to allow me to point up to four residents to the committee? Okay. Roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Stain.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Okay, Forest View Fire Protection District proposed new member and officer appointments. Paul, on, on that, on the Elk Grove Township Rural Fire District, where we have issues going on there right now. But, but on that one, we just approve, I know, on that one, we just approve their, their board. On this one, is it the same, same arrangement with Forest View? That we just approve their board members? We don't, we don't appoint them. We approve them.
Right, right. They, they have their, they have their people, and then we just approve them and their officers, because they have president, treasurer, secretary.
Right. So it's, it, both, both of these townships, to give background, is we, the township will, will hold a referendum for an unincorporated area to set up a rural fire district. If that passes, then we work with them to set up their taxing authority. Once their taxing authority is set up, then they, they go into operation. And initially, the township will, will appoint members of their board. They have then the option of going and putting another referendum to, to be elected, rather than have us appoint them. The Elk Grove Township is an example where they, Elk Grove Township Rural Fire District went, went out, did the referendum, which passed. The only thing that was, that they left in their bylaws is for us, for us to approve their appointment of members to the board, officers and members to their board. We just approve them. They, they come to us with a recommendation, and then we approve them. And unless it's something way out of hand, somebody that really is just a real problem, we just, we just, we just go ahead and approve it. And I think in this case, I've had no indications there's any issues or problems. I made a few calls, and there's, there doesn't seem to be any issues here. So I, I think we, we move forward and approve it. But is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, any, any questions or anything regarding this proposed new member officer appointment? Okay, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Stain.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
All right, we've got two tentative budget worksheets here that I'm going to go through with a little bit more time than normal. The worksheets are, are what the, our finance director and our administrator put together with the input from the department heads. As if you remember, I, when I came on, I required the department heads to develop their own budgets and submit their budgets. And the reason I wanted that was because I, I wanted them to take responsible, more responsibility for their department and to understand what, what costs, that their current programs or their current staff, or, or if they want more, what it would, what it would cost, what their budget would be. In the past, it's the administrator and supervisor just put it together. So Paul has taken, and Eric have taken this information, put it into, put it into this budget. They made a few tweaks, but this is the initial worksheet. From here, we will, we will then refine this a little bit, working with them, to come up with a tentative budget, Paul? Tentative budget. And then, once the tentative budget's approved, then we'll go to a final, a final budget. And the agency grant information is not in this one right now. It will be placed in when we go to the tentative, because the Agency Grant Committee's not done with their recommendation work yet. So the placeholder in here is just a dollar amount that we allocated last year, but that will change based on what the Agency Grant Committee submits.
The numbers in there is the total of what they requested this year.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. It's the total of what they requested this year so far. That doesn't mean that's what we're allocating. Okay. So let's take out the tentative town budget. And I'll just highlight, highlight certain things as we go through here. Under revenues, where it says property tax, we've, we've budgeted, this last year, we budgeted for two million, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, basically. We have only collected fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. And this is, it's because of the, the collection problems that the assessor's office is having and the delays in the collection, delays in the billing and collection. That will, it always takes, we don't get all the money at once. It, it, it trails, it trails off over a couple of years, because there's appeals. And the appeals can, can change, or, I mean, that, that money will not be officially collected until the appeal is, is completed. But we should be, this is way out of sync with what we normally would have at this particular stage. We will still get the money that we have levied, and we've done very well with that in terms of getting pretty well the full amount, if not even a little bit more sometimes. But at this particular stage, the collection and the distribution of us is lagging, lagging substantially. Okay, under personal property, the personal property replenishment tax, if, that was a, there used to be a personal property tax in, in the state here? And that was done away with? But then the townships and, and municipalities and all said, wait a minute here. This is a significant amount of money for us. We can't afford to be losing this. So basically, it was done away with, but the state agreed to subsidize, in a sense, the townships and the municipalities by providing a funding for them to offset, partially offset that dollar amount. There's always discussions going on about that it's going to be done away with, or reduced, or whatever, and someday probably it will. But up to this point, they've continued this. So this, if you see on here, the property tax, we've got, we've got replenishment, proposed, we're proposing, we're saying we're going to get about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is what we're projecting, but we, we don't know exactly what that number's going to be. We budgeted in twenty-two, twenty-three, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, and we got four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. The year, the year before, we got two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. So there's, there's, it's not consistent number that you get. So we're budgeting two-hundred-and-fifty to be conservative. Okay, the, the, the only other thing down here is the, the youth services income. If you notice, that's blank. And the reason that's blank is we no longer charge for any of the services. They just, we just didn't put a zero in there. We used, there used to be some basic charges, or we would, we would require residents to pay, sometimes based on, you know, their ability to pay. But we've just done away with that. So they're free services now. I will say too, on the, on the town budget too, if you notice, let's go back up to loan, our Roden Bridge loan interest. That, that interest amount is going down eight thousand. And that's partially because we, when we sell the Mack truck and the equipment, that's going to go and reduce the loan that, that they owe the, the town. If you remember, they borrowed from us, or I should say, that Roden Bridge borrowed from us to complete a repair of the streets. They're paying that down. And as they pay that down, obviously, the interest that they, the interest that they pay, or the interest it's gaining on these things is, is reduced. So there, that, that, that will be, that will be going down to surplus. And that, so that surplus will be coming, that surplus will be going to pay down the Roden Bridge debt. And then that money will be, will be, will, will take from the Roden Bridge they, to, to, to go ahead and, we will then use that money that comes to us to pay down our construction loan. So surplus goes to Roden Bridge. Roden Bridge uses it to pay down their debt by, by, by funding or paying down the debt to the town. And then the town uses, we use the money, then to pay down our construction loan amount. The dollar amounts that are out there right now is the county, the Road Bridge, the Road and Bridge owes us two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, and we have about two-hundred thousand on the construction loan?
Round that out, I thought it was three-something.
Yeah, okay. About, let's say, two-fifty or so. So we'll be reducing these, I think, relatively quickly over the next couple of years. All right, let's slip through the administrative, go down to contractual services. The, the one increase of any size there is building and janitorial maintenance. Our janitorial costs have gone a little bit, but we've also taken on a handyman. And a handyman to do, to do odd jobs around here that we're finding, where there's issues that from, that were left over from the village, or just as we move along now, where things are coming up. So we're, we're just, we're, we were at seventy-five thousand in actual expenditures this last year. We just moved up to a hundred. Will we need all that? Probably not, but we, we want to make sure we got it covered. Okay, go on over to the next page, to the town for the commodity. When I'll go to capital outlays. So the youth services Bike Safety course, we had budgeted yesterday, last year, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And for the land mire building permanent improvements, we had budgeted a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-fifty thousand. There was eight hundred, eight hundred thousand is what the amount remaining at that point that we thought we would, we would be paying, that we would then pay down last year. Well, you know, a lot of stuff wasn't done, a lot of work wasn't done. So only about a hundred-and-fifty thousand of that was actually paid, it appears, this year. So on our proposed budget, we're putting four-hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred thousand. That gives us six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that would be the remaining balance that would have to be paid. Now, it could be that things get more, things get done quicker, and they're done before the end of our fiscal year. And then we'll be, then we'll be using more money from this year's budget. But we're projecting that we won't be paying, other than that one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that we won't be paying any further down on the, on the, on the eight-hundred thousand that, that currently is outstanding. We're betting that we only do a hundred, we're guessing that we'll only do a hundred-and-fifty, and that we'll still have to pay six-hundred-and-fifty next year, though that could be shifted forward. Then we look at personnel expenses. The, the staff salaries, that just reflects a three percent average increase in, in, in salaries. Some it's two, some it's four, but an average of three percent. The assessor salary is just a step down that we've, we put in place four years ago. And each year, it brings the salary down a little level until it finally stabilizes in her fourth year. So that's what, that's why that, that is down, is the assessor's end-to-term salary will be at a level lower than it was when it started. Then on the, on the, on the road, the, what, is this where we are right now? On the hospital life insurance and IRF employee share, that went down ten thousand. You go, well, why would that be? That's because the IRF comes to us and tells us what we're going to pay. And basically, I think we're one of the few townships that was overfunded. We were a hundred percent plus funded for our pensions and for our, and for our, our, our insurance. So those costs, those costs, IRF has reduced what we need to pay this coming year. So we've been very fiscally responsible there. All right, if we go over then to, I think there's the assessor's office, I don't think there's anything there that we need to address. She, her salaries are up at three percent, assuming that three percent dollar amount. And go over to social services. Those are the, this page has nothing, has no proposed information, because those are the agency grant. That would be this page here. That'd be page four, four of five. There's nothing there, because that is, other than the amount that's been requested, is six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. The Agency Grant Committee will come back and make a recommendation as to what, what we really, what they recommend we fund. Okay. And then we go to the last page here. Bike safety, nothing new there. The buses, we had a hundred-and-sixty-five budgeted last year. We did not, or this, for this, this year, we did not, we have not bought the bus. We have not gone out with the bids yet, so we're assuming that we'll buy that in the next fiscal year. So that one-sixty-five just carries over to this year, next year. And then on the staff salaries, we have adult and family counseling and youth services combined. And I, I am missing one thing here. There's a possibility we may add a part-time employee for youth and family services, and that would need to be added here. I couldn't find where it was, and I think Paul was going to check on that. So that may be, that may be an addition for a part-time employee for youth and family services, particularly for the Challenge Course. Okay, is there any questions right now on the tentative town budget? Once again, this is just a worksheet. This gives a tentative look. I just highlighted those things where there was something more significant potentially going on. Otherwise, everything else is pretty well in line, or very closely in line with the last year or two.
Yeah, George, just the, just under the social services there.
Which one is this? Page what?
Oh, I'm sorry, page four.
Yeah.
The, the ones that are blank there, is that, are those charities that are, haven't signed up yet?
Yeah, what that is, we just haven't put anything in there yet. We just put the dollar amount of the requested grants, and those may be, those, those may be, some of these people, may not be all of them, may be people that aren't even listed there. But we just put the full dollar amount, and we did not put the proposed budget in there, because the Agency Grant Committee has not come in with the recommendation.
Yeah, because I think the Can Win and the Alyssa's Mission, Alyssa, or, yeah, Alyssa's Mission were new.
Yeah, yeah.
This year, we didn't get any new requests, so.
It's all the same thing.
Yeah, but I just see like Maryville, for example. It's like totally blank. Is there?
Oh, and where they, Maryville, that's because they, they must not, they... Oh, and where the, Maryville, that's because they must not, they were, what happens is that they'll be in this budget for the number of years, it shows on the top, I don't know, one, two, three, four years. And if it's zeroed, if it's zeroed out, if they're not requesting, they'll stay on here until the four years pass and then they'll drop off. So Maryville will drop off at some point here. So they have not requested anything or gotten anything for four years.
At least.
At least. And they will eventually drop off as we move forward. Sort of like when you have traffic, all those traffic violations, it takes five years for them to drop off and they drop off one at a time. These drop off one at a time if they're not getting, if they're not requesting or they're not being granted anything.
Okay, thanks.
All right, if there's no questions there, let's just turn real quickly to the road department budget. Once again, on the property tax levies, we're levering, you know, unchanged again, 270,000. You know, all our levies are unchanged, but this, as you can see, you've only gotten $8,000 distributed to us off of this current year's levy. So that's only 3%. And on the personal property tax, same type thing here, they get a little bit more subsidy from the state, probably because, in this case, probably because Elk Grove Village industrial area is kind of taking into consideration in this whole process here for the road and bridge. So we're projecting, we're projecting more or less in line of what we've seen, a little sort of in the middle and that's actually, you know, it's 200, we're looking, we only budgeted 100,000 last year, but if you look back historically, that was too low. So now we're saying 200,000 and we're probably still too conservative, but that's why it's up 100,000. And just finally historically, we said it's staying around, it's coming in around the 200, $230,000 level, so we should budget 200,000, not 100. Okay, let's see, any other things here that are significant? If you notice down there, on the personal property tax replenishment tax and their expenses, that 40,000 we take from ours, what do we get, Paul, does that go to the villages?
Yes.
Okay, so we get, the state gives us money for the, to replenish the lost property tax revenue and then we have to provide some of that to the municipalities.
And that's only for road?
Yeah, it's only road, only road district we do that. For town and everything else, we just keep it. But for road district, we have to give them a percentage of it. And if you can see, as you can see, it's like, I don't know.
About 40 something.
40%, yeah. All right, road district salaries, that's just Art as the field rep and our anticipation of him, that will be pay him to plow the parking lot. The salt is just, you know, parking lot, what we need for the parking lot, otherwise it's included in the price with the villages. Yep, I don't think there's anything else till you get to the other, to next page, page two. Vehicle maintenance, I haven't put anything proposed in there right now. I think we'll just have the pickup and we may be, I mean, there's a, there's a, the pickup we have back here for the road and bridge, we also have a pickup up here for the food pantry. So we're going to keep, we're going to keep both of them right now, but the one for the food pantry, we are going to, we are going to sell at some point to replace it. Is there any questions on here? Once again, it's pretty well, pretty well unchanged. And the bigger issue is just we dramatically increased the personal property replenishment tax and we taxed and we did that because of historical trends. And I would point out again, we're not, we're not getting the collection or distribution of the taxes we've levied. They're lagging behind. All right, last one is general assistance. Once again, property, under revenues, property tax levy is 442,000, we've only got 12,000. Once again, 3%. Under expenses, building maintenance is up a little bit, equipment maintenance is up a little bit. In one case, it's because of the VGA software update for the, for the adult and family counseling and those are just adjustments with usually some technological or equipment purposes. On staff salaries, they're up, they're up the 3% on that same page. And then it's 31,000 also Andrea was promoted to deputy director of the social services department so that Cory would be able to have time to attend meetings and do other things and on a higher level and Andrea could step up and fulfill those responsibilities when she wasn't there or was tied up with other things. So that's the, that's the increase there is the 3% and then Andrea's modest increase in salary due to her appointment as deputy. Then if we go over to the back page, the last second page, it's home relief, food, GA. This is kind of, on food, under GA, we will give, we will give individuals Walmart cards for food. They can choose not to take those cards and instead can shift that money to cover rent. So there's, there, the, there is, there is a, there is a situation here where we give them cards for food, but they can switch it for rent and then it would fall under the rent line item. On the food side, what I think we're finding is that we had a surplus of cards, of Walmart cards, so we haven't had to buy, we don't expect that to buy that many next year. So we, as a result, our dollar amount on the food side for providing the food assistance associated with general assistance to go down. On the other hand, the rent will go up because, one, they can shift their food to rent and a lot of them choose to do that because it's, rent is harder for them to cover than necessarily food. The second thing is there are 10 new units being added to our township by an agency who will most likely fall under our GA minimum requirements. And so we're expecting, we're going to have some support there. And then on, if you go down to EA rent, that's down 30,000 and that's just historic trends. So you got GA and you got EA, I know you're all familiar with that, I can explain that Brian to you later, but the GA is the primary one that we use and we have a surplus of cards for food, so we dropping that and we're increasing the rent on the GA because additional units and because those cards for the food are sometimes being shifted to rent. I don't think there's anything else that's dramatically different. Does anybody have any other questions or anything else? Once again, this is a rough tentative, but I wanted to go through it with you all so that you saw some of the key things that are jumping out. We'll have a much smoother one next time for the tentative in January. Then like I said, we'll approve the tentative and then it will sit on the table for 30 days and then once it's, and then at the next meeting, then we will, so, public hearing, Paul? Do we do a public hearing right before we approve the final?
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably we'll do, probably we'll put the tentative, we'll take this, smooth it out, bring it in as a tentative, get it approved, then ask to sit on the table for 30 days, have a public hearing, usually right before our regular meeting in February, and then we'll approve it in February. If we run into any issues or problems, we can, we can just, we can just delay the final till March if we need to. Any questions? If I confused you enough? All right, do we need to, we don't need to approve the worksheet?
Is there nothing, nothing on the sewer?
Pardon?
Nothing exciting, no changes on the sewer?
Sewer, no, no, sewer is, sewer is the sewer. Yeah, it's just.
Sewer's not a levy financial because it's just based upon letting the people that are on the sewer system pay us, so it's not a levy that we're getting from the county, it's just the budget to stick in the dis.
They pay, pay as you go, basically.
Yeah, pay as you go, right.
Literally.
Okay.
It's literally, forget.
No, that's bad, that's bad.
It is, sorry.
Paul, we don't, do we, do we need to approve the work, we don't have to approve the worksheet, we just have to prove the next tentative, right?
Yeah, we accept the, you'll accept the tentative.
Yeah, yeah, you have a motion to accept the worksheet.
So moved.
Second? Second? Okay. Any questions? If not, roll call.
Are we going to approve each one separately?
No, I'm going to approve, I mean, I'm asking for approval of all of them as a, as a group.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Epstein.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye, and this is accept, this is not approve.
Okay, let's see, where are we now? All right, the, that's all the new business. Before we go into executive session, is there any discussion or comments from the trustees on any issues?
No.
No? Clerk, assessor, anything? Hey, you don't want to tell, Brian, you want to tell us your life history? I was five, I.
No, thanks.
Okay, all right. Okay, then I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to, if we ask for a motion to adjourn to go into closed session, this would be under, we'd be going into closed session under Uniform Code of, Uniform Code of Military Justice. No, second, I had that in front of me. Yeah, there. Under, under the Illinois Code, Illinois Code 120 slash 2C1 and 2. So is there a motion to adjourn to go into closed session?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourning to go into closed session. Let me call the meeting to order. Roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Present.
Trustee Dante?
Present.
Trustee May?
Present.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye, present. So we begin a motion to approve disposal?
Yes.
All right, so I, do I have a motion to approve of disposal of the minutes, what are the date on those?
March.
March 14th, 22.
March 14th, 1920, 19, 2022. And April 24th?
25th.
25th, all right.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. All right, so this will, these minutes will now be released, they'll be on our website. The tape will be destroyed, but the hard copies on the website, they'll be there, they're foible now. Okay? Is there any other issues and other questions that any of the trustees or anyone else wants to raise? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's closed.